Good evening, welcome to the Ashland Planning Board meeting. It is Thursday, May 14th. We are meeting online on the Zoom platform all throughout Ashland and wherever else people are connecting from. The meeting tonight, the official meeting is through Zoom and does not include any comments made on Facebook where Waka may be sharing the video or live streaming it or elsewhere. Though, people are always welcome to use those forums for how they see fit, of course. This is being recorded and broadcast on WACA and we thank them for that. On our agenda tonight, we had several items, including 81 West Union, a new version of the Phase Two plans. However, there was a mix up in the posting of the agenda in Town Hall. We have a public hearing on, for the site plan of Five Homer and that hearing notice got posted both as the hearing notice and as the agenda. So the officially posted agenda only covers Five Homer. So we're going to have to postpone everything else so that we follow our agenda as posted and noticed to the public, which is unfortunate, but we may we may need to do some juggling because we had specifically continued the hearing for 81 West Union Street tonight. So we may have to just continue that till some other time. So after we do Five Homer, we're going to talk about whether we're having an extra meeting or moving things forward to our next meeting in two weeks or how we want to handle this. That said, let's get started with Five Homer. This is the building most recently known as Rams Farmers Market or before that, Amina Market. And before that, it was a auto parts store. And it's been unfortunately, the the market has not, did not succeed and it's been empty for a little while. And now we have a dentist's office that is wanting to occupy that. So that said, let me read the public hearing notice and then we can open it up. "The Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 14th, 2019 at seven..." That is a typo, it is 2020. The notice says 2019, I'm pretty sure everyone would assume that meant 2020. So I'm going to just accept that as a typo and not say that there's a problem there. "At 7:15 via Zoom Video Conference Meeting accessed via..." And then there's the link there "to hear the petition of..." And I apologize if I pronounce this wrong. "Tez Shaw, DMD, Care of Law Offices of Jerry C. Efrin, requesting design plan review and site plan review per Chapter 48, Section 6 of the Massachusetts Zoning Act and Chapter 282, Sections 9.6 Design Plan Review and 9.4 Site Plan Review of the Ashland Bylaws. The applicant is proposing a change in use of the property from a retail store to a professional dental office. The property in question is located at Five Homer Avenue, Assessors Map 14, Lot 374 in the Ashland Downtown District C. Parties wishing to be heard on this matter should submit written comments to the Planning Board ahead of time and/or appear at the time and place indicated above. Materials may be viewed at the Town website. If you click on the Planning Department, there is a link for active cases. And this is the, is, as we said, Five Homer Avenue. For more information or comments, please contact Peter Matcheck, the Town Planner, at 508-532-0100, Extension 7927 or by email at pmatcheck@ashlandmass.com." All right, with that said, we will turn this over to the applicant to let everyone know what they want to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Jerry Efrin. I'm an attorney with the law office at 25 West Union Street here in Ashland. With me is Dr. Tez Shaw, the applicant who also will be addressing the board during the presentation. As you indicated in the introduction, Mr. Chairman, we are here before you tonight for site plan review. As you correctly, it was most recently utilized as a grocery store. Before that, another grocery store, before that Napa Auto Parts. The applicant is currently a party to a Ferguson sale agreement with the current owner. The current owner has owned the property since 1988. The applicant does intend to change the present use to a dental office. That is an as-of-right use under the bylaw. The dental practice will be known as Zen, Z-E-N, Family Dental. The applicant is not undertaking any exterior construction or floor plan enlargement or the premises. And in the CD District, this property is exempt from the off-street parking requirements. Let me summarize a little bit of what this project is not. There are no exterior alterations proposed except signage, as shown on pictures that were submitted with the application. There's no expansion of floor space. There's no creation of parking areas. There will be no outside storage nor use of any kind. Thus, the only reason we are here, the only trigger for site plan review, which is a prerequisite for getting a building permit for the required outfitting and equipping of the dental office, is the change of use. This is an interesting property and when one looks at it historically, you learn some interesting things about downtown Ashland. This single-story building located at the corner of Homer and Main Street is right next to the business known as Pizza Mine. To the naked eye, it would appear that this is one building. It is not. There is approximately three quarters of inch space between the two buildings. They're not joined at the roof either. Based on the property record card that we showed you, the building dates back to the 1880s. As you can see from the plot plan, the entire lot is only 2,932 square feet. And as you can see from the photos, the building occupies almost the complete entirety of the lot. Based on the title records from the Registry of Deeds, this lot was laid out on 1931 plan, which was recorded, which conforms to the precise dimensional requirements that exist currently. And the records of the deeds from that area indicate that by that time, the property was already equipped with building. In 1929, the town of Ashland took proper, took space from all four properties in this particular intersection. The property that's owned by the Goldbergs, the Public Market, this building and the post office. And what is now the entrance to, I guess, the municipal area where the train station occupied. And they created the rounding of the intersection as of 1929, after which this plan followed. So the intersection, the boundaries, the curvings, the location of the buildings have been there for quite a long time. Obviously, based upon the historical items I've cited, the lot and the building predate zoning as far as dimensional conformity. Let me summarize the project. Under the PNS, obviously, my client's obligations to close are contingent upon the receipt of all necessary approvals to operate the property as a full-service dental office. Those approvals consist of site plan review, design plan review, and a building permit. There are, as I indicated, very minor exterior alterations proposed. The modification proposed by the applicant for the exterior will be replacement of the four awnings, which are presently on the property and still bear the logo of the market, with two flushed signs along the topmost of the building facing somewhere, those are shown on Exhibit E to the application and in several pictures that were also submitted. Both signs will be made of aluminum with an acrylic vinyl paint and will be within the requirements of the bylaw. The signs will be lighted by gooseneck lights that comply with the bylaws' illumination standards. And the windows will be appropriately tinted to provide for patient privacy. When we discuss the interior layout, you will see that the operatoriums, at least most of them, absolutely front the street. So we, obviously, people that may be going to the dentist aren't going to want to be viewed by the outside. The current plan is to remove the, for the interior, is to basically gut it to accommodate the dental practice, to remove all existing acoustical ceiling tiles, the grids, the lighting fixtures, the current HVAC, the interior walls, flooring, and existing wiring and plumbing. The premises will be fully updated in accordance with the building code, including new walls, wiring, electrical panel, new and updated hot water heater HVAC. And of course, it'll be furnished with equipment to have a full-service dental office. They're, although extensive, none of that will constitute an increase in the floor space. With respect to parking, although there is no requirement for off-street parking in this district, parking is going to be had in the municipal lot across the street, not the limited street spaces in front of this building in Pizza Mine. Prior to signing the Ferguson sale agreement, in this case, my client went over to the parking area five to six times to do a quote investigation. He's going to have approximately five, up to eight employees, when it's fully outfitted with himself, another dentist, technicians, and hygienists, and office staff. And he'll have room for five patients at a time per service, perhaps with two in the rating room at full capacity. He'll need approximately 15 spaces for use. Based upon his observations, pre-pandemic, during normal business hours during the day, there is significantly ample room to park those cars without intruding on anybody else's space. I know the board is in receipt of some correspondence about parking from one of the business owners who's been there for a long time, who made a request that there be some condition about not parking in his lot. Of course, we can't park in his lot, we can't park in the post office lot, we can't park in any private property. And there's signage to that effect in all of those places. And that's not something that the board has to further, get further involved with. My client did go and appear last week before design review to present the plan and to go over the discussions relative to signage and windows. The board, at the conclusion of that meeting, unfortunately, did not make a recommendation. What they discussed and requested, Dr. Shaw looked into three points that they made and we have. The first point they made, they wanted a dumpster placed on the property. That's not going to be possible. If you look at the one area that is not building-related, which is on the Main Street side of the property, it's the size of less than the driveway, it will not accommodate a dumpster to be able to be picked up. Instead, there will be two trash barrels that will be outside that door where trash will be able to be replaced after it is removed from the inside. That trash will not include medical waste. Medical waste will be segregated inside and they will be picked up by an appropriate medical waste contractor. The design review board also thought it would be a nice thing to dress up the building and install flower baskets on both sides, on the front and side of the building. It's a good idea in theory, but the applicant would prefer not to do that and we will communicate that to the board. Number one, we don't want to disrupt the integrity of the historical brick structure any more than necessary, which we're going to have minimal, minimally, put in the signs and lamps. In addition, because the property actually is right on top of the sidewalk in most of the locations, those things would actually intrude into the public way, might be dangerous. Somebody could hit them and it might be a maintenance issue. So we're going to respectfully decline to do that. The other, one member also indicated that for cosmetic purposes, they thought lightening the windows to more translucent window panes would be preferable. As I mentioned before, the reason for making sure that the windows are tinted is for privacy. I don't think anybody wants to go to a dentist or medical provider and want to be seen from the public during treatment. So unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do that. All of those recommendations, however, were laudable. And I think it's important that design review exercise those functions. I think it's easier for them to do that when they have a more clean palate than something with an existing building on a really tight lot, which is what we have here. Dr. Shaw, I'd like you to introduce yourself and tell them a little bit about why you're coming to Ashland and what you plan to do here.
Okay, hi, everyone, I'm Dr. Shaw, can everybody hear me fine? Okay, so just to give you a little bit of background about myself. I actually graduated from Carnegie Mellon in 2006, Information Systems, Computer Science. And I actually used to be a software developer for Lockheed Martin, I used to make video games for the Marines. And then I did the next logical thing, which was go to dental school and become a dentist. So after that, I graduated in 2015. I've worked for Gentle Dental, Aspen Dental. I've worked for many private offices and I've also worked for many public offices, including Tamworth Public Clinic and the one right now in Nashua. So in all my experience, you can only do so much when you are working for another dentist. You can only help with the patient as much as the owner of the practice can really allow you to. All the things I really want to do is have my own practice in which I can help the patient to the best of my own ability. And I've lived in New England for almost my entire life. I've either been in Massachusetts or in New Hampshire. Out of my 35 years, I've only been outside of New England for probably just six of them. That's it. So I consider New England to be my home and I want to settle the rest of my life in New England. So when I was scouting for different locations, one of the things I wanted to do was get close to Boston, but not too close to Boston. So that's actually the reason why I picked Ashland rather than Boston is because it's a nicer area. And actually, I've visited Ashland many times when I was a young kid because it was the only place where you can go to Shilox Meek Temple. So we would actually trek a good two and a half hours every month to visit Ashland. So that's actually how I initially got familiar with Ashland. And yeah, so the purpose of this practice is to not only serve the community, but also to help out the individual patients in that community. And...
Would you just speak to your staffing and what you plan for that, please?
Okay, so this is going to be a brand-new practice from scratch. So staffing is going to be on the lower side. When I first opened the practice, there's going to be one front desk person and one assistant. So two other employees, including myself. As time goes on, I'll be getting a dedicated hygienist, so that will increase by one. There's going to be five operatories in total. So I could see as much as potentially five or even six employees working at the location. It's going to be, you know, building up, getting the proper patient base and then expanding as needed.
Thank you. Let me just make a couple concluding remarks on why I believe this application satisfies the criteria for site plan approval under the bylaw. I think we meet the requirements of the bylaw and the proposed change with dental office are as of right under the bylaw. As the board knows better than me, way better, the scope of review of any specific application for site plan review and design plan review is intended to be plan and product-specific. Those projects which propose significant changes in existing structures and lands, those which propose a use which any rational person would know will dramatically impact the use or access to surrounding properties and neighbors or which impose substantial impacts on town services or create undue congestion and traffic noise or odors, deserve strict scrutiny. And if necessary, make approval subject to clear conditions to mitigate those adverse impacts. I would suggest to you respectfully, that's not what you have here. Here you have someone, Dr. Shaw, who's willing to make a very large financial commitment to building a professional dental practice in downtown Ashland, which will hopefully be here for a long time. It is not the same type of uses there that have recently been unsuccessful. It will provide employment for other professionals, dentists, hygienists, technicians, and office personnel who will occupy the downtown area and hopefully be able to spend money to support other Ashland businesses located nearby. We therefore urge that you give this careful review and upon such review, hopefully give it your approval. Thank you.
You're welcome. So first, I will open it up to the board for comments and questions. But before I do that, I will say, I, out of respect for design review, we won't be, even if we think everything makes sense, we're certainly not going to be making a decision tonight. We're going to wait for them to complete their review before we'll take any action on this.
Let me just...
With that said...
I understand that, Mr. Chairman. I would tell you that we're running up against a due diligence deadline under our agreement. I would respectfully be urging to see if the product is approvable, that you might at least vote some type of conditional approval subject to receipt and recommendation from design review, which we understand is not waivable and thus must occur.
We can talk about that, depending on how the rest of the discussion goes tonight. Comments from other board members?
I have a question about the, just a continued question about the parking. I know that, I know a parking lot across the street that they're referring to. And I'm just wondering, you know, at the present time, I know that, I know the lot, it's, there's often plenty of spaces there. But as hopefully, you know, other things start to happen in the town and parking continues to be a little bit more competitive.
Trisha, can I just kind of, are you talking about the parking lot across from Pizza Mine or the one at the Main Street Liquors?
Across from Pizza Mine, this is the one by, what is it, like the old train station?
Yeah, I was just making sure, we're all talking about the same thing.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just wondering as, and let me know if my microphone goes, because I've been having some problems with it. I'm wondering about the parking, you know, down the line a little bit, as other businesses also go online in the downtown, which we continue to encourage. And you know, as those spaces perhaps get more competitive, is there a Plan B or, you know, how would you address that when the, when the, that's, it's not a very big lot. So as that starts to become maybe more competitive, is it just encouraging finding spots a little further away and walking and getting exercise, which I'm all for, but...
So can I jump in for a second too? Yeah. I don't want to cut you off, Trisha, you're all... Just in relation to the parking too, I can attest to, on a daily basis, I see people parking for the post office and other places at Main Street Liquor. So I think to dismiss that business owner's concerns is not very fair. But at the same time, as my understanding that the parking lot across from Pizza Mine is not a public parking lot.
It is public.
I thought it belonged to the doctor's office, no?
Yeah, so I think there's two different parking lots, may I interrupt for a second?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to just share my screen for a second, just so everybody's on the same page. Can everybody see me, see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so over here is Five Homer Avenue. I think there's a little bit of miscommunication here. This is not the parking lot that I am talking about. This is not the public one. This is the, the medical office that's across the street. This is not where I'm going to be telling my patients to park. It is this whole entire parking lot here. And I haven't seen it, you know, nearly as full, barely even 20% full. So I've had to actually do a lot of scouting, I have visited, this was in January, that I hardly saw any of these spaces used up. So even if the downtown area does get, become more and more busy, there's a lot of space right here. So everybody who will have an appointment with me will be parking right here, not here. Does that make sense?
Well, I believe isn't, isn't part of the historic stations public?
As I understand, it may not be. I have gotten conflicting information, so I don't want to rely on the fact that it could be public. But as of right now, that bigger parking lot is where my patients are going to be parking.
My understanding is that the, the old train station building and the parking lot next to it are privately owned. I'd be happy to be wrong on that.
I think it's going to be even more important than to direct, because your patients then would be walking quite a bit further than these easy-access parking lots, which do, I think we've all seen people park in the, in the liquor parking lot that aren't going into that store. So some more aggressive means of making sure that your patients are comfortable with that walk across the, it's not a far walk, you know, it's not a pleasant walk, but that would be a valid concern of the other, of the other businesses. I think the, the letter we received just mentioned some other ways of encouraging, making sure that patients are occupying the proper parking, the proper parking lots. I don't know if that might cost you patients, because they just don't want to walk that far.
Just so, I guess everybody's on the same page, what's going to pass, every patient, they need to get the reminder or phone call or text before they come. And most patients like to have a text message before they actually come in. In that text message, it's going to be a Google Maps link. And in that Google Maps link, it's going to tell them exactly to park in that location. That way, they don't get lost, they don't park in the wrong spot, because that's the main reason why people would park in the wrong parking spot, is because their GPS told them to go to Five Homer Avenue and then they can't find the parking. So if we provide a link, like an actual Google Maps link that on their phone, they tap on the link, it goes to that proper location. And it's fairly easy, once you have Google Maps telling you, well, this particular location, this large, two lot, two location.
Thinking in advance about that, I appreciate that.
Yeah. Theory that it's, you're not going to be able to make sure everybody does that because, you know, people will see that closer parking lot with some empty spaces and it's hard to guarantee that everybody's gonna go park further away. You know, I mean, you can, you can direct them there, but there's no guarantee that they're not gonna, I mean, they already have a problem at the liquor store. And they've got signs posted all over the place. So just human nature, people are going to want to park the closest place. And if they see an empty lot across the street, and that looks like a train station, so they may just park there, that could be an issue, but...
The thing is, the town, when it's created this zoning district, addressed parking and they've made a determination not to require a certain amount of parking for this. This is, in terms of future expansion, this is probably the only lot within at least a square half or third of a mile that has occupied completely by an existing building. Even on the other side of Front Street, where there's room to rehabilitate and expand some of those properties, those lots are much larger and could, if the use is changed theoretically, accommodate parking on those lots. This one can't. And since, since what he's doing is conforming to zoning, if he's making, hold on for a second, if he's making a judgment that he can utilize and have his patients utilize that lot, that lot, I think he should be given some consideration for that. I would also say that, you know, in terms of park, people that abuse parking, whether it's the Public Market's lot or others, or even going to Pizza Mine and parking somewhere else, retail customers are going into these stores for five or 10 minutes perhaps. The Dr. Shaw's people are going to come in, both the employees and patients, and they're going to be there for a minimum of an hour. And they're much more able then to go ahead, park in a designated space and walk if they decide to go out and become a patient of the practice.
While you are correct on that, you know, on a day like today, I don't think it's too hard to convince people to park across, in the lot, across the tracks. On a day when it is 37 degrees and heavy rain, people are going to look to take shortcuts and not walk as far. Which is why we want to address the problem as much as we can in this process so that we minimize the problem going forward. And I, you know, the response of sending Google Maps links of where to park with appointment reminders, I think is great. I think it would also be appropriate to have a, a small notice at the sign-in desk that's as a, you know, it says parking notice. If you are parked in the parking lot immediately across the street or in the uh diagonally across the street, uh, those are private parking lots and you may be ticketed or towed. Please park in the municipal lot on the other side of the train tracks. Uh, it, a, a simple notice like that, um, wha- what we really want to do is make sure that we've done all the communication we can, so that if the patients are abusing private parking that's not intended for this purpose, uh, it is truly a private matter between those patients and the landowner. And that the uh, the occupant of this building is not contributing to that and has done due diligence to discourage that. I, I think that's the appropriate uh, response here.
Can I ask? One more question?
If they're not required to have parking, it's not, it's more of the town needs to have parking available. We're not requiring parking for any of these businesses, right?
Yeah, a- and I agree, there, there is plenty of
Park somewhere.
Yeah, there is plenty of parking in the municipal lot for our downtown uses. We've had parking studies that say we have a surplus of parking downtown. It's just not right in front of all the businesses where, uh, unfortunately, Americans have come to uh, want their parking and not having to walk, you know, a hundred feet. Um, but, you know.
Uh, that is One other question.
Have here.
Related to that, Dr. Shaw, are you, I, I don't know if I missed it earlier, are you planning on having any, like, Saturday office hours or anything like that? Or is it just strictly Mondays and Fridays?
Um, I do plan on being open on Saturdays as well.
Because I would just, and I don't know how familiar you are with the town, I, there could be a challenge with the parking on like Farmer's Market Saturdays where it's already a struggle to get parking anywhere around there. Um, so that could be a challenge if you have patients coming in looking for like the street parking too, just the FYI.
Yeah, so they, um, there should be still enough parking in that main lot, um, I believe, even in these uh, events.
Dr. Shaw, I mean, on a, on a Farmer's Market Saturday, that lot is full. It is completely full. So I, I mean, I
People are parking over by Stone Park.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I can always block those days out.
Yeah, I think we're just raising that as an awareness point for you to do Sa- Saturday hours during certain times of the year.
Okay, yeah, I can definitely uh, make sure I don't schedule any patients those days.
No, you really should schedule a booth at the Farmer's Market for those days.
There you go.
The market for business. Um, that's a worthwhile, limited investment of funds.
Yeah, um, this is gonna go outside of uh, our scope for site plan review. So I'm not telling you, you have to do this, it's not gonna be a condition or anything. Uh, but I would consider talking to uh, the owner of the parking lot immediately across the street to see if you could uh, lease uh, four or five parking spaces for your patients. Uh, because I think that would be the optimal solution to the whole thing.
I've already started this discussions, but nothing has been finalized yet.
Yeah.
Um, it's, the owner is not the doctor there, so it's actually a different person. And um, I don't want to say that anything has been truly final of a handshake or anything at this point. But I've already started.
Why we didn't bring it up, because we would not, did not want to give the board the wrong impression.
No, that, that, that's good. Um, but I see your thinking along those lines, because that's, that's clearly the logical place where people would want to park uh, from a convenience and, you know, visually, if you were just thinking of where am I gonna park here, that's the obvious place. So um, it's nice that you're at least uh, pursuing that to your, the best of your ability, uh, especially as your practice grows. Um, even if that's not something you do right away, uh, that would be good.
How is the um, how is the trash picked up in this location? You said, I understand where you have the garbage bins. Um, and then there's the medical pickup. The, does someone, will trucks be backing into that driveway area to pick that up? Or how, how does that work for a business like this?
He'll be able to put it, he'll be, I believe he'll be able to put his trash out on Main, uh, right, uh, on Main Street like we all do. Uh, ne- right next to the house next door, which is actually another dental office. That'll be the only trash pickup. Um, he'll be able to utilize appropriate barrels for that. The medical waste will be picked up by a vendor. And he, but the medical waste is not collected in enormous uh, quantities. So it's picked up based upon the amount of volume and it's a quick pickup. It would be much like a delivery, probably to Pizza Mine. The guy'd be there, he'd get out, he'd do what he had to do and leave.
So is this uh, trash, the regular trash pickup, is that a uh, private contractor? Or would he use the orange bags with the town's collection?
He, he, both are available. It's really a question of whether or not, assuming that it would be people to be on the, if you can on the Main Street side, he would do that. If not, he would get one of the private haulers that uh, I know about.
I have a question about the sign. It's, is, that's just lighted by those lights. What is that? Just what kind of plastic letters, wood?
Um, they are um, acrylic vinyl. Um, so I'm just gonna share my screen again. Okay, um. So everybody can see. Okay, so um, yeah, these are the goose necks lighting. Um, so it is going to be some form of metal that's going to be going to the building. And then it's going to, in order to get this um, multi-colored um, logo to show up, it's going to have this um, acrylic uh, vinyl to it.
It's just lit by those three lights on there?
Correct. Um, because um, uh, according to the city code, I cannot have a backlit sign. So everything has to be essentially um, uh, indirect lighting. So that's why I'm going with the goose necks.
And there's only, that's the only one, there's nothing on the other side of the building?
This is the other side of the building. That's um, this is looking from uh, Main Street.
Okay, so it'll be two of them?
Yes. And just to give you an idea, this is how it looks like right now.
And you can see the spot there where the trash barrels would go. And yeah, there's, there is no room for a, a dumpster there.
Right. That fence is, is owned by the adjacent property owner, not, it's not part of this property.
Even if there was a dumpster there, they'd have to stop the truck in the road, roll it out and pick it up.
Not gonna work.
Yeah, that would be kinda
And it was mentioned in the design review meeting, uh, that that would uh, block the entrance. And that, uh, that'd be a, a safety issue, having a dumpster blocking that.
Though still, if the trash is there, if there, if there's barrels, I mean, if it's a private pickup, someone's gonna have to stop there anyway. I mean, if you put the orange bags out, the trash truck will stop and throw them in. But it's going all the way down the street, so that, it's not gonna add really much to that.
All right, uh, this time, should I open it up to the public if we've had the board comments for now?
One more quick question.
Okay.
Is there any mechanical stuff going on the roof that's gonna be big and bulky? Or any, you know, new AC system that's gonna stick up and?
Sorry, um, there will be a new AC, but as far as looking at from the outside view, you won't be able to notice any of it. So there'll be nothing as, as far as the outside, anything new.
Okay.
I also have one other question too, for Dr. Shaw. Um, I'm just curious if, like, the equipment that you'll be bringing in, like, any new radiological equipment will be brand new, or are you taking it from another practice that you were previously at?
It's going to be brand new.
Okay.
And we'll go through the standard licensing requirements and all that.
Uh, just curious, thank you.
Um, very quickly, Dr. Shaw, um, from the perspective of, are there any touchstone points as you're trying to go through this process that you need to deal with the Board of Health of Ashland? Any, any connection points there that are necessary?
As in, um, what I would need from Ashland itself, or, um, sorry, I don't completely understand your question.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just trying to understand, like, to do this in the town of Ashland, do you need to, is there because you're opening a medical practice, a dental practice, is there any, is there any interaction with the Board of Health, the, the, of town of Ashland?
Uh, not with the actual town of Ashland Board of Health. There will be a number of things in order to get proper approval that's done by the state of Massachusetts. And we'll have to go through all of their codes in order to get the proper licensing for everything, including the equipment and the radiograph machines.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public? Uh, Mark Dasani?
Um, and to the last question that Joe said about Board of Health, you might need, because we're using um, chemicals and gases and stuff like that, to um, do novocanes with operations on it. That's, that's a different. Um, my other one would be, um, the sidewalk, is there gonna be, when it's winter, is it gonna be cleared by you or by the town to get to your entrance? That's one question. Leave me, leave me with the other one. And the other one would be, can there be signs indicating for your office only on the municipal parking lot? To indicate, dictate that that's where they are. And the last one would be, is there any um, handicap spaces involved in the um, parking, parking spaces? Thank you.
Uh, the municipal lot is uh, what it is. Uh, it would not be changed in any way for this. Uh, they do not have the authority to reserve spots for their use there. Uh, there are some handicap spots in that lot. Uh, those would not change. I believe they're mostly located in uh, positions that would be convenient for uh, patrons of the library. And it would be up to uh, the Board of Selectmen, uh, the Select Board to um, change the lot. Uh, since it's a town lot, if they wanted to put in different handicap spots or uh, make other rules for the lot. Uh, so that'd be completely outside the scope of this uh, review.
Since they're not providing any parking spots.
Any parking in, in front, whereas the main door would be where the reception is going to be.
Uh, the, the on-street parking is um, is not going to be changing. Uh, there is, the closest on-street spot is really more in front of Pizza Mine. Um, I, I would hope that even if they are allowed to park there, I don't know if there's currently a time limit on that spot that uh,
It's a one hour parking.
A one hour? Yeah, because I, I would hope that people would uh, be using that for short-term parking for Pizza Mine as far as opposed to uh, dental patients.
Hey, this, Mr. Chairman, can I go through the uh, through you, through the uh, attorney, if he knows the ADA codes for down there?
Uh, the ADA codes um, would affect only what they're doing inside the building because the, uh, since they're not changing the inf- existing infrastructure, I don't believe that triggers any um, code upgrades to current code. Uh, so since it's pre-existing, um, while it might be nice to get upgrades, uh, it would be outside the scope of uh, this review. Uh, Mr. Affron, am I correct on that?
You are.
All right, uh, any other public comments? Um, I know the Design Review Committee, uh, one of the members mentioned rather liking the existing awnings. And I know, uh, you said at that meeting, uh, you were taking them down because you couldn't put up your sign and keep the awnings. Um, I understand that. Um, I do agree, I think they look kinda nice. Um, but we also histori- I remember when it was an auto parts store and there was no awning there and um, it was all right too. So, um. Yeah, I, I think the only uh, big issue here is making sure that our uh, conditions include um, communicating to uh, your employees and uh, patients, appropriate parking locations. And uh, uh, one thing I would throw in, uh, into the decision is uh, that you are uh, that if you choose to add uh, solar panels to the roof, uh, that that would uh, be at your option. That would not be something that will would um, require the planning board for, because I like solar panels and I, I think it would be, especially when you have a big flat roof like that. Um, uh, when you can work it into your budget, I think it would be a great thing to do. Um, so, uh, I don't know if that needs to be discussed, but I don't see there's any reason not to uh, make it clear that that's an option in the decision, unless, assuming the rest of the board agrees.
I'd appreciate that, so as to emphasize that that would not trigger the need for additional site plan review, that's very much appreciated.
Yes, um, we have thrown that uh, clause into uh, several of our decisions in the past uh, where people weren't uh, specifying anything like that, but we thought it was a good idea to encourage um, green improvements.
Thank you for that.
I think just a note of, you know, I haven't um, obviously seen things from the design review, but um, I think they're always just looking for, you know, how do we continue to improve the look of downtown Ashland? So I think any, um, you know, anything you can do, I don't, you know, I, I understand the question about the window boxes, the privacy of the windows, the awnings, um, and those may not be the right solutions to this property. But um, just keeping in mind uh, the state of the building and how um, you're taking over of the building it really becomes um, a plus to the town in terms of its appearance versus, I, I don't expect it to go down but are even versus straight line, like how do you, how do you add something to the town by taking over this building and, and you know, what in the limited amount maybe that can be done with it. So I think that's just um, a good thing to have in mind as you move forward.
Preston?
Um, I think we've really covered about all there is to cover. I uh, sat in on the Design Review Committee meeting and um, so everything that was uh, represented uh, from that, uh, I would agree was accurate. Uh, but they, they wanted um, to do a little more review on it. Um, what is your timeframe on when you would need a decision on this?
Our, our due diligence uh, contingency, once extended already, is June fourteen. So I was hoping that we would proceed here to uh, a reasonable conclusion and be able to get a final decision before that. Now technically, we have a building permit contingency as well in here. But if, if I'm in a position where we can lawfully apply for a building permit and we can in, have the building inspector indicate that, you know, assuming we give them a proper application, we'll, we'll probably be fine. We need to get through here. Um, I, I would, we, just so again, we intended to write the Design Review Committee prior to their meeting of the twenty-first, with the answers and representations we gave here. We weren't necessarily going, considering to participate again orally, because we, you know, they did only make a few points and we think we can address them, but it's not like we're in a position to potentially change our position on that. So I'm hope, I'm hopeful with that, you can kind of figure out what to do here to reach a reasonable conclusion.
All right, uh, I am really quite hesitant to try to finalize a decision without design review finalizing things. Kathy, do you want to say something?
Yes, please. So it's probably shocking that I was the person who was talking about the planters. Um, I went down today and measured the sidewalk, because I got challenged to measure the sidewalk um, at our last design review. um, at our last design review meeting. We have another one on the 21st, so not too far away. Um, and at the doorway itself, it's 11 feet wide. And then it starts to drop down to eight feet at the crosswalk. And then as you hit the corner with a light pole is, there's only four feet there. So, I think it would be really great if they could figure out how to put some planters into our window boxes on that main, those main windows as you look at it from the municipal, municipal lot, row, road track side of the town, cuz it would, they're taking away that awning, and I liked the awning just because it adds another visual interest there. Once you're just looking at a sea of brick, you're looking at a sea of brick antique though it is. Um, I think it'd be nice if we could, uh, do some other dressing up of the property down there. And I'm curious if somebody I'm planning knows, cuz I asked the design review. My recollection was as part of the downtown district, people were supposed to put in planters or, uh, trees in front of their properties. You know, sidewalk has to be wide enough. On the, on the side opposite of the post office, it's four and a half feet barely over there. So that's not gonna make it. That's my comment.
So is their, is their, their building go right up to the property line? So those planter boxes, would they be on their property or on the town property, the sidewalk?
If you look at the plot, plot plan, there's ve- very, very little area where it would be on our property. And, you know, a- as I tried to say in my initial remarks when I started on the property, this is pretty unique property. It's been that way for a long time. Um, I'm not the business person here, I'm just a lawyer. Dr. Shaw's made a determination that this is an appropriate place for him to build his dental practice, given all of those constraints. And, um, he just doesn't believe that those things are appropriate.
Okay, so because my point was, when we do the, redo the whole downtown, if it's on the property, maybe the town could put something there. You know what I mean? When we're dressing up the rest of the town and putting all the things on the sidewalks and something. If that's, you know, I mean, I'm just throwing out options that maybe if you can dress that up, maybe it's something the town could do when they redo all the sidewalk.
It's pretty subjective. Unfortunately, when you get to the appearance issues and you look at what's next to us, okay? Which I wouldn't suggest is dressed up and that is, that's nothing to say negatively about that business. They got a great business there and they do an excellent service, but it doesn't look great, okay? And so no matter what we do on our particular property, it's still gonna be next to a pizza place.
For now, till, and that can be picked up.
Yeah, I mean, just because.
And it's gonna be fixed up. You can't, you can't just keep the whole town looking like it does just because the building next door looks that way.
Yeah, exactly. With every new building, with every new investment into the interior of the space, I think we fully expect new owners to look at the exterior of their building. And that doesn't mean that there's a one-size-fits-all, that every building has to have planter boxes or every building, you know, whatever. I don't think that is. But I think it's, it's looking, it's having your designer looking as seriously, um, at the outside of the building as it is to the inside of the building and making sure that this is an upgrade, that the town of Ashland sees it as an upgrade um, to the town. And when windows are tinted, which I totally understand that they might need to be, um, you know, you know, what, what other options? How do you think outside the box to make this business look, look attractive? That it's not trying to be its neighbors, it's trying to be, um, a corner building that, um, is offering something to Ashland. And I would look forward to seeing what that is, but, but it definitely deserves that consideration.
Because once they, you know, then somebody improves the pizza place and then this place just looks like an old building again. So we're trying to make everything, set the bar a little higher for the whole neighborhood.
I mean, it sounds like it's gonna be state-of-the-art on the inside, so I'd like to see that reflected on the outside in some way.
I expect on the inside, um, you know, ha- having talked with my dentist about the costs of dental chairs, um, he may be putting in five spaces for patients. I don't believe he's gonna be stocking all five spaces for patients initially because that, that would be a, a huge investment. Uh, so.
Investment here for the building, equipment and infrastructure is well over a million dollars. It's a massive investment. And frankly, hopefully people are gonna be coming there because of the quality of the dental services, not the physical appearance of the building. And, and, you know, I hope they don't come to my office for the physical appearance of my building. I hope they come to my office, but they're gonna get solid representation.
But we on the planning board.
Yeah, but.
Our job is the physical appearance of the building.
Patients might not, but home buyers do.
Does the applicant have anything to say that's in response, or?
I mean, I can't give any kind of promises at this point. It's definitely something that I do want to do is to make it look nice because I do want my, this is a brand-new place. Everything that's going to be in the inside is going to be brand-new. Um, I just don't wanna say, okay, I'm gonna use these type of windows, I'm going to use some sort of frosting instead of a black shade, I'm gonna use a frosted shade. I can't give that as a promise, but it is something that I actually did talk to with the construction people, uh, last week. If you can do a frosted versus a black tint, how do I still maintain the privacy? Is there any way to still get the light come in into the operatories, uh, while still giving the privacy? It's, um, definitely, I am exploring these things. Uh, I just can't give you a promise, like, okay, it's going to exactly look like, um, this frosting, but I do plan on improving the location. I mean, I believe we even talked about in the last week, um, about where to put my logo on the door itself. Um, as long as it is acceptable to the current code, that's definitely what I'm planning on doing. Um, it's just that the sign company, um, is a little bit hesitant to say that I can do such a thing because I don't want to present to the board saying, yes, I'm gonna put my logo right on the center of the door and then you can move in. Uh, I mean, come in, uh, when that doesn't adhere to the code. Last thing I want to do is put, uh, something there that the city doesn't like.
Who owns that length of the sidewalk? The town or its business?
The town owns, owns the sidewalk. It's part of the right-of-way that, uh, along with the roadway.
Well, I mean, there's only so much you can do also with the building, as long as you're not painting it green or something.
For what it's worth, I, I, um, I, I mean, I, I think we're gonna hear what the Design Review Committee says. Uh, you know, Kathy, I appreciate your comments, uh, at this meeting, but I, I mean, I think, I think since you're on the Design Review Committee and, you know, Preston is, is making sure that we, we hear from you, like, I think, um, you know, your comments should be reflected in the decision of the Design Review, right? I think that's the, the right venue for that to come through to us, my opinion. Um, and, um, uh, I, I actually like it without the awnings, uh, better, uh, given the color and the, the look, my opinion. Um, everybody's got one, so that's it for me.
And the original building didn't have awnings, right? When it was originally built?
Yeah, the awnings were part of Mina Market. Uh, we had, uh, extensive, uh, hearings on the planning board in 2011. And that's when the, the, uh, at that time, blue awnings were added.
Got it.
I agree with Joe.
Yeah, I think, um, we should wait to hear from Design Review. My understanding is they have a meeting a week from tonight. And then we have a meeting a week after that. Uh, at that point, we could, uh, finalize our decision. Um, the conditions that I think we've discussed so far, uh, would be, um, uh, to, uh, have them, uh, that the, uh, uh, business would be responsible for notifying its employees and patients of appropriate parking. And that the, um, we would also note that the addition of solar panels to the roof, um, would not require additional site plan review. And in addition to that, uh, we will, uh, consider anything that's in the final, uh, report from the Design Review Committee. Uh, I sympathize with the applicant that there's not a lot of space and it's tough to tell them you have to put in planters and stuff when it's, um, public space that they don't own. Um, and, uh, but at the same time, anything that can be done to make the exterior of the building look nicer, uh, would be a plus. So, uh, I think that's where we are tonight and I think we should continue this, uh, for two weeks from tonight. Uh, is the rest of the board concur on that?
I agree.
One thing over the roof, that roof is old as old as the building, so we don't know how strong it's to take the weight.
Oh, that, you're not granting a building permit? And if they wanted to put a solar panels on there, the, um, building inspector, uh, in granting the, uh, building permit would require an engineering review to make sure that the, uh, roof has sufficient structural strength to support the weight.
They just don't have to come back for a special permit.
They don't have to come back to the planning board for site plan review, uh, because it's already clear in the decision, completely unambiguous, that it's, uh, something that they have the right to do, uh, simply through acquiring a building permit, which would require engineering review of the roof through that process.
And I have, I'm interested, that's, that's if the panels are, uh, we're going way off maybe chart here, but as long as the panels are flat or not visible from the screen.
Uh, if we wanted to state that in the condition, we could do so.
I would be on board with that.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Preston, uh, Peter Magic, just wanted to kind of, uh, you know, I know, I understand the board i- is looking to continue this, uh, to, to a meeting two weeks from now. Uh, I do just wanna note that this is a site plan process, uh, and it is a fairly old building. Uh, and so, um, I just wanted to kind of re- reiterate that, uh, we're gonna have to look at that site plan criteria as we kind of come up with a decision, uh, as we move forward.
Yes, um, yeah, I, I think this is probably gonna be pretty straightforward. Um, and if we have the decision, uh, have a draft decision for our next meeting, uh, we could, uh, go over it at that time. And, uh, hopefully vote and sign it.
Yeah, the, the office will, will, uh, will have something ready for the planning board to view at the next meeting.
Yeah, and, and while I appreciate the, uh, time constraints of the applicant, um, we need to do our due diligence as, from the town's perspective. And, um, your time constraints are unfortunately not our time constraints. Um, and, you know, we'll, we'll try to work with you, um, but, uh, we also need to, uh, respect the Design Review process.
We'll be fine.
Okay. But yeah, yeah, I've, I see no reason why we couldn't, uh, complete this two weeks from now.
We're looking forward, we'll look forward to it and we'll be responsive to any additional questions.
Alright, um, that said, um, would, uh, if, uh, the board agrees, uh, I believe that we should have a motion to continue this, uh, for, uh, two weeks to, I believe that would be Thursday, the 28th at, um, 7:15?
So.
Alright, uh, Joe made the motion and, uh, Trish, was that a second?
I'll second.
Alright, uh, and, uh, since, uh, we are doing this, uh, through Zoom, to be clear, uh, let's have a roll call vote.
Kayla Buchanan, aye.
Phil Williams, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Preston Crowe, aye. That passes 5-0. Alright, uh, and that, uh, completes this for tonight. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Now, um, we had a couple of other items on, uh, what was supposed to be our agenda for tonight.
How do I hang up?
Let's see if I can, um,
Don't.
Yeah, uh, but as I mentioned, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, uh, there was a posting error at Town Hall. Uh, I'm sure staff is gonna look into, uh, what happened to make sure it doesn't happen again. Um, but, uh, mistakes happen from time to time and, uh, we have to, uh, adjust, uh, to work within that. Um, so, our agenda only, the hearing notice for Five Homer was posted as the agenda, which means nothing else was properly posted on the agenda, which we actually do the 81 West Union tonight. Um, it was, I believe the hearing was continued specifically to tonight. Uh, so we are just gonna have to open it up and then, uh, immediately continue it to a time when it is properly posted on our agenda, so we don't violate the open meeting law. And I apologize to the applicant for this because this is, uh, completely an administrative mistake on, uh, the town's part.
Preston, could I jump in here? I just wanna apologize, um, you know, the, the, the agenda was not properly posted on the website. Uh, the planning office takes full blame. Uh, when I did go on the website to pull up the agenda, um, what I found was the, uh, was the, was the, was the public hearing notice for Five Homer, uh, instead of the planning board agenda. Uh, so therefore, uh, you know, this came up at, at very late, uh, till, you know, seven o'clock tonight prior to the meeting. So I do wanna reach out and apologize to Mr. Barbary and Mr. Rodehiser-John that are on the call. Preston, you did mention this at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, Attorney Barbary, I tried to reach out via phone, call to you prior to the meeting, but I did, I, I know, I failed to, uh, get touch with you, so I do wanna reach out and apologize. And, and, uh, like Preston said, this was administrative failure from the town's point of view. Uh, so I think to, you know, I, obviously we do have to open it and then close it. However, I think we need, we could, you know, because it was, you know, my, you know, the town's mistake, um, I would ask the board to consider, you know, maybe hosting a meeting next Tuesday night, uh, or next Thursday night. Uh, the board is act- I mean, the applicant's actually gonna to go in front of the Design Review Committee. Um, in, in, in past positions I've been in, sometimes we've had a joint meeting between two boards. So I think I would like to leave that option on the table. Obviously, I've not, you know, spoken to the Design Review Committee about having a joint meeting, uh, but I think that would be an alternative option. Uh, and I, and I would ask everyone to, to, to work with the applicant to reschedule something in, in, in a quick manner of time. And, and I do regret, you know, this and this is a hundred percent a mistake and, and, uh, and, and mistakes happen. So I'm, I'm sorry from, um, and, and I know that's all I can say. So I do take the blame for this.
Um,
Can, can I comment?
Yes, uh, as lo- as long as we restrict our comments to, uh, logistical and scheduling, uh, we're free to do whatever we want. So yeah, go right ahead.
Yep, um, you know, he, as Bill Belichick says, it is what it is, so we're not gonna deal with that. Um, it just creates, as, as the board is well aware, a, a real time restraint that we're already under in further impacting that. Um, it, it seems to me from the viewpoint of what we need is, is input from, you know, the board members and Peter, Peter and, and, uh, uh, your consultant, uh, and it seems to me there's two ways to, to get that, uh, before the next meeting in two weeks. Uh, one simply could be the board members, you know, correspond to Peter, the, the, the comments or questions that they have, uh, in, in that we sit with Peter and your consultant, maybe the chair or something before the next meeting, uh, and to go over all that, or, or as Peter commented, um, you know, a joint meeting or, or giving, if everybody's concerned about input just to the board. you know, a joint meeting or, or giving, if everybody's concerned about input just to the board, the board, board member can certainly give input to the design review board, which is a public hearing process. However, the board wants to do it, we don't really care. We, we would just like to, uh, have as soon as we can questions and comments, so that when we meet, in, in fact, in two weeks, uh, we can have responses or revisions or whatever. I, I don't want to lose two weeks because of what, you know, what happened. And, and I don't think we have to do those. I think there's whichever way the board wants to do it, opportunity to get us the input, uh, that we would have gotten out of today, today's meeting every, anyway. And then in two weeks, we're back in front of you after we've met with the design review board and, and have the full public hearing discussion, proper notice, the whole deal.
Uh, what do the other planning board mi- members think of, uh, joining the designer review committee next week? Uh, what time is this on the designer review next week? Do we know?
I think it's.
No, Emma's not. Um, the agenda hasn't been posted yet, but it was advertised as seven o'clock, which is when the meeting starts. Um, the other item on the agenda is, uh, five Homer.
What do planning board members think of, uh, posting it also as a planning board meeting at seven o'clock next week?
I can do that.
I'm good.
I'm okay with it, but I can't promise right now without looking at some stuff that I'm available, but I don't have a problem with that happening.
Yeah, I mean, that's one option, right? So i- is the other option offering comments, any comments that we have through Peter? Like, uh, I'd like to know what, if there's any other options before deciding on one option. Sometimes I think it's better to let the design review committee have their discussion. So what, what are the options?
Uh, the other option would be, uh, we each provide our input individually to Peter and he communicates with the applicant and, uh, we show up as regularly scheduled in two weeks.
Or is there a third option where we have a meeting on Thursday after the planning, after the design review?
We, we could also meet on a different night or, um, or on Thursday after design review is discussed this separately.
That, that would certainly be helpful to us.
So there's more options.
Excuse me, Preston, my internet's kind of being unstable right now, so that's why I've, uh, I've had some issues. But yeah, th- there's one other option would be to, to hold the planning board meeting that would be posted tomorrow sometime next week. A second option i- is attorney barbarian, as mentioned, would be for everyone to, to view the plans as I sent them out to everybody. And, and you could come in, you know, write back, you know, comments or concerns directly to me, which then can be forwarded to the applicant. Or we could, uh, try to host a joint meeting with the design committee or, um, or try to host the meeting, you know, as soon, you know, uh, as Preston said, after the design, however, the design review committee doesn't meet until seven o'clock. So you're talking about an eighty thirty start of a planning board.
If we do it on that day.
If we would do it on a Thursday after the designer review meeting, um, it, it's up to everybody and, and everyone's schedule, like I said, and I'm sorry about the situation. I truly am, so.
I'm, I'm okay with any of those options.
Yeah, the, the earliest we could meet, if we're meeting on a separate night, would be Tuesday. The, the town clerk could get it posted on the website tomorrow.
But is the design review going to have their, when's their meeting?
Thursday.
They're at Thursday, starting at seven.
So ours would have to be after that if we wanted to.
If we want a separate.
Yeah. And we'd kind of have to, how would we, how will we ask them if they want a joint meeting? Maybe they don't really want a joint meeting. They just want to do their thing and then send it over.
That's, uh, you know, I, that's, that's a hundred percent, you know, we could, you know, we could, um, we as the planning board could schedule a meeting at eight thirty and if you join to, you know, jo- if you decide to join the designer review committee, you could do that. And then you could, you know, in, in view the, the applicant's proposal. And then you could therefore come back and, 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 and join the planning board meeting at eight thirty, would be an option. Or we could have our separate meeting on Tuesday and, and take input and give it back to, you know, the applicant. And then the applicant can, can go through and, and, and meet with the designer review committee on Thursday. And then we can, uh, continue on and therefore we don't really kind of skip a beat, I would say.
I think I would be in favor of that option. I think I would, I would be in favor of, um, let's, and I assume if we have a meeting on Tuesday, it's just this project, that we're not putting anything else in it.
It would, it would just be this project and, and at this point, you know, we could schedule something for six forty-five or seven. If, if someone was worried about time or would like to move this around. But, but yeah, I know, we could, we could only put, we would only put this on the agenda.
And this is so that they can get, um, the, the developer can get all our input and have that and go to the design review committee, get all their input, and then the next meeting we would.
They're going to come back.
Get all that together.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Just saying, if that, I was just clarifying if that's what they want to do, that that's their purpose is to get our input and their input. And then they're okay with having this at our next meeting with all that together, our next regular.
Yeah, I know, so I, I, I think that the best option for everybody would be to meet next Tuesday at seven o'clock and have one item on the agenda and, and, and just kind of, and, and not try to skip a beat if is, if that's okay with everyone's schedule.
It's a little awkward for me, but I can manage it.
It's fine.
If it's just the one agenda item, I mean, I feel bad that this happened, so I will make it work if that's what everyone else can agree to.
Well, Phil, is it, is the time, can we make it a different time, Phil? Is it?
Um, I, I mean, I don't want to hold, I mean, lunchtime would probably be better for me, but I, I mean, if it's one item, like, I don't want to mess up everybody else. I'll make it work.
I would just want to, just need to make sure that the full board will be there or, or at least those members who, who, uh, have already missed the meeting will be there, so we don't run afoul of, you know, qualification of members.
Correct.
Yeah. I will, I will make sure that I'm there no matter what.
Okay.
So what's the proposal? It's next Thursday at eight thirty? Is that the proposal?
Yeah, I think we're leaning towards, uh, Tuesday and the time that was, uh, tossed out was seven.
It's fine. I can do it.
Thank you, everybody.
Sorry this happened. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, um, then is there a motion to continue this until next, uh, Tuesday, uh, the nineteenth at seven P M?
So move.
Second.
All right, that was a motion made by Dale and seconded by Tricia. Uh, we'll have a roll call vote.
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Phil Williams, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Preston Crowe, aye. That passes five zero. All right. I'm not sure, uh, what, what else was supposed to be on the agenda tonight?
Uh, I was going to give update, an administrative update, uh, however, I can hold back on that. And then there was a, the continued public hearing for the, uh, bylaws. And, and that was really, um, we were going to talk, I was going to talk about that a little bit. Uh, we talked about the definition for commercial kennel, uh, versus a animal, animal veterinarian hospital. And, uh, so that was still on the agenda because it was open, an open item. However, I will state that, you know, uh, the board is selecting, they're trying to, with the COVID nineteen situation, we're try, they're trying to scale back the agenda to only, um, articles or necessity articles. And therefore, uh, we've been asked, the planning board has been asked to hold back on all zoning articles until the fall. Uh, and, and so i- in that case, that's what I was going to ask the board would be to, to continue, not to continue, but to close the public hearing and to, uh, and to, to note that we would take up all zoning articles at the fall town meeting due to the COVID nineteen, uh.
Okay, I believe, we completed the hearing on the design review article.
Correct.
And so whether that goes on the spring town meeting or gets pushed to fall town meeting, we have completed our work on that and that can still go to fall town meeting.
All right.
On the kennels, I believe we were of the conclusion that it needed a good bit more work. But the, that, um, the change we were starting to make started opening up a, a tangled mess that, uh, we're going to need to fix, you know, three or four different things to get it right. So, uh, if that was continued till this week, I think, um, because it's a continued hearing, the right thing to do is again, continue it till two weeks from now and then, uh, wrap it up at that time when it's properly on the agenda. Uh, in which case presumably we will close it and, uh, uh, saying that we need more work on this. So I, I thought we had closed it. I didn't remember we had continued it, but.
I think we continued it. I was going to bring some more information back to the board to review, but, um, I think that's where it sticks.
Yeah, so I, I think from a legal standpoint, what we need to do is continue it tonight. So, um, that said, is there a motion to continue, uh, the hearing on, uh, zoning for animal kennel definition to, uh, uh, May, Thursday, May twenty eighth, at, uh, we'll go ahead and say seven fifteen, we'll probably take it up significantly later than that.
No move.
Second.
Okay, that was, uh, made, uh, motion made by Dale, seconded by Tricia. Is there, um, a roll call vote?
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
You're muted, Phil. Joe, you're muted.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Bill, and, uh, Preston Crowe, aye. Phil, um, uh, apparently dropped out, but, so I'm going to call that as a four zero, uh, motion. And that, that passes, uh, so the only thing left to do at this point is to adjourn, I believe.
Really quick, I, can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Sure.
Because there's so much, this has nothing to do with anything we're talking about, but in, I just wanted to ask a question about like the Valentine property. If this maybe Pete would know more about this. How much space there? There's all these people that are concerned about the historical buildings in Ashland are going to be torn down. Is there any possibility of making that, is there enough room, is there enough, whatever, to make that property? We move the historic buildings to that property to make some kind of a park. I've seen, I've, I've seen it done before and I don't know the logistics and all that, but just as an option, because a lot of people, you know, as you've seen on Facebook and everybody's, everybody's coming out with these worried about the town and on the historical buildings. If, and what they do in some towns and cities is they take, when they're tearing down an old building, they move it to a park. And then it's like a historical park, and I'm just throwing this out there, so anyone that's watching or anyone has any ideas about that might be another option for some of these buildings that we want to save. And I thought that if, I don't know if the Valentine estate's big enough or we have property somewhere to do that, but I just wanted to throw that out there. And.
I think, uh. Hey, I don't want to in- interrupt. I just wanted to tell you, I got disconnected during the vote and I, for ten seconds and I came back.
Okay.
Uh, what did you vote?
Um, I voted aye.
Okay, so that was a five zero vote. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, yep, sorry.
Uh, Dale, just a reply to that, uh, I can put it on the agenda item, uh, and I can take a look at that. And obviously, if you have any examples, you could please send them over to me and we can kind of look into it and, and, uh, just unpacking. And I think, you know, we can put it on a, uh, upcoming agenda.
Just to have a discussion and, I mean, the town has bought all these properties and we have these historic that, the buildings that people want to save, and there may be some kind of a, something you could do to make that, you know, have another option rather than just tearing them down. I'll send you, I'll send you examples, because.
Yeah, that, that's an interesting idea. I know, uh, moving buildings can be a, quite an expensive prospect, but, um, I've, I've also seen it done a number of times, so it, it is possible.
There's a lot of places doing that now, and I'll, I'll send Pete, I'll send you some examples. And it's just something to think about and for the, the town, whoever's listening or, or whatever to, as another option rather than just stop everything because we don't want to tear down a building or tearing it down to put something up. Maybe if it's worth saving, you know, there's a way to do it. So I just wanted to throw that out there and for future discussion and maybe Pete can help me with that and figure out, you know, because the town's buying a lot of properties and that might be a good use of, of some of it. And nice historic park or something like that.
I think it's a very interesting alternative, uh, and I think we can, you know, I, we could talk about it. I can, I can look at it and, and, and we can put on an, uh, upcoming agenda.
And I know it could be impossible and it could be, it's, there's a lot of stuff involved. It's not something, but I just was thinking about that and all the stuff with the historic stuff that's coming up and the buildings that have been torn down, maybe something to just discuss as another possible.
All right, uh, with that said, um, I believe we're ready to adjourn? Is there a motion?
I move that we close this meeting at eight forty-six P M.
Ooh, an hour and a half.
Seconded.
All right, uh, motion made by Dale and seconded by Phil.
Dale Buchanan, aye. Dale Buchanan, aye.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Phil Williams, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
And Preston Crowe, aye. Uh, thank you and good night.